Council meeting for May 5th. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence, please. You may be seated. Madam Secretary, roll call.
William Caldwell.
Here.
Gary Simpson.
Here.
Marlon Milner. Olivia Brady.
Here.
Derek Perry.
Here.
Sony Sanders.
Here.
Linda Christian.
Counsel, would a counsel member like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the council workshop meeting held on April 21st, 2015?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Prior to tonight's meeting, council met in executive session to handle or discuss legal matters. The next item on our agenda is a presentation to emergency responders. Would Councilwoman Sanya's and Councilwoman Brady join me and Chief O'Donnell on the floor? And Chief, you'll go first.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, members of municipal council. I'd like to personally thank each of you for taking the time during this evening's evening to recognize the personal sacrifices and team efforts of these first responders and support agencies who assisted us in our time of need. So far this year, the Norristown Fire Department has responded to two extra alarm fires. The first was a four alarm fire that occurred at 611 Sweet Street on February 4th. That fire also claimed the life of one civilian. The second incident was a three alarm fire that originated at 818 Cone Street on April 19th and then spread to five adjoining dwellings. When fires like these occur, we need a tremendous amount of personnel and resources to effectively mitigate and control these incidents. And without this group here behind us, we would probably still be up there with our resources we have in our community. So, again, thank you for thanking them, and I appreciate you guys giving us an opportunity here tonight.
First of all, Chief O'Donnell, thank you very much. These are times when Narsetown Council really enjoy their duties. In the midst of tragedy, a lot of times, there is a silver lining, that silver lining being our emergency responders. We completely appreciate the hard work, the diligence, the commitment that you put forth in handling emergencies as they arise in Narsetown. I'd like to start first with doing the individual recognitions. Would Battalion Chief John Remillard come forward, please? Chief Remillard, whereas the above-named member of the Narsetown Fire Department displayed courage and a dedication to duty on February 4th, 2015, whereas a four alarm fire broke out at 611 Sweet Street, multiple residents were trapped inside their apartments and in the hallways while a fire raged out of control in their building. The above member utilized his training and quick action to safely remove a victim from an upper-floor apartment and successfully bring them down on a ground ladder. The above member showed extraordinary strength, agility, and courage while raising a 35-foot ground ladder and then ascending it at almost a 90-degree angle to reach and successfully remove a trapped victim from an upper floor. Whereas the above-named member acted swiftly and professionally during this incident. He accepted the challenge before him and performed his assignment without flaw. As a result of his efficiency and dedication to duty, a victim was removed from the building to safety. Chief Remillard, congratulations. Did I pronounce it correctly? Chief Tim Hosington, I'd like to get it right. Sorry about that. Assistant Chief Tim Hosington, whereas the above-named member of the Narsetown Fire Department displayed courage and a dedication to duty on February 4th, 2015, whereas a four alarm fire broke out at 611 Sweet Street, multiple residents were trapped inside their apartment and in the hallways while a fire raged out of control in their building. The above-named member used his training and quick action to assist in the rescue of a victim trapped from an upper floor of the building by ground ladder. The above member performed his duty while demonstrating extraordinary strength, agility, and skill. Whereas the above-named member acted swiftly and professionally during this incident. He accepted the challenge before him and performed his assignment without flaw. As a result of his efficiency and dedication to duty, a victim was removed from the building. Congratulations, Chief. Would Assistant Chief Harry Reese and firefighter Anthony Barbado please come forward? Did I pronounce your guys' names right? Thank you. Assistant Chief Harry Reese and firefighter Anthony Barbado, whereas the above-named members of the Narsetown Fire Department displayed courage and a dedication to duty on February 4th, 2015, whereas a four alarm fire broke out at 611 Sweet Street, multiple residents were trapped inside their apartments and in the hallways while a fire raged out of control in their building. The above members performed search and rescue operations in zero visibility conditions. The above members were able to locate a victim utilizing their training and experience. The above members were able to begin the process of bringing an unconscious victim from the building in an attempt to save a life. Whereas the above-named members acted courageously and professionally during this incident, they accepted the challenge before them and performed their assignment without flaw. As a result of their efficiency and dedication to duty, a victim was removed from the building. Congratulations.
Read that one, and there's one for each.
Would Lieutenant Tim McMenon, firefighter Andrew Piles, and firefighter Chris Camarda please come forward?
You're only going to have two or three. The third one's on his honeymoon.
Which one's on his honeymoon?
Camarda's on his honeymoon.
Okay, thank you. Lieutenant Tim McMenon and firefighter Andrew Piles, whereas the above-named members of the Narsetown Fire Department displayed courage and a dedication to duty on February 4th, 2015, whereas a four alarm fire broke out at 611 Sweet Street, multiple residents were trapped inside their apartments and in the hallways while a fire raged out of control in their building. The above members utilized their training and quick action to safely remove a victim from an upper-floor apartment and successfully bring her down an aerial ladder to the ground. The above members also assisted in the deployment of hose lines and assisted occupants inside the building find their way to safety. Whereas the above-named members acted swiftly and professionally during this incident, they accepted the challenge before them and performed their assignments without flaw. As a result of their efficiency and dedication to duty, several victims were removed from the building to safety. Congratulations and thank you. Oh, I didn't miss that one. My apologies. Battalion Chief Richard Lockhart, please come forward. How could I forget you? Oh, my goodness. Battalion Chief Richard Lockhart, firefighter Dana Lee, firefighter Sam Domeno, firefighter Robert Spickel, firefighter Andrew McIntyre, whereas the above-named members of the Narsetown Fire Department displayed courage and a dedication to duty on February 4th, 2015, whereas a four alarm fire broke out at 611 Sweet Street, multiple residents were trapped inside their apartments and in the hallways while fire raged out of control in their building. The above members utilized their training and quick action in an attempt to control a fire while facing overwhelming obstacles. The above members were able to begin to locate the fire, remove victims to safety, and advance hose lines in near-zero visibility and high heat. Whereas the above-named members acted swiftly and professionally during this incident, they accepted the challenge before them and performed their assignments without flaw. As a result of their efficiency and dedication to duty, several victims were removed from the building to safety. I can't believe I did that.
Thank you for your services. Good job. All right, so this is the police department. Officer Gennard, Dana Gennard's here to accept that. Which one's hers?
These are on stitches, sir.
That's mine.
So, there's only one for each officer.
One here. Yeah.
And that is Officer here.
The bottom one, Dana Gennard.
Would Officer Dana Gennard come forward, please? On behalf of Sergeant William Tims, Officer Charles Douglas, Officer Christopher Lefebvre, Officer Brian Boyer, Officer Brian Ferguson, Officer Benjamin Licona, Officer Dana Gennard, I have to get it right. Whereas the above-named members of the Narsetown Police Department displayed dedication to duty and took decisive actions on February 4th, 2015, whereas a four alarm fire broke out at 611 Sweet Street, multiple residents were trapped inside their apartments and hallways while a fire raged inside their building. The above members used their training and quick action and assisted with removing multiple victims to safety and assisting fire department personnel with multiple on-scene operations. Whereas the above-named members acted swiftly and professionally during this incident, they accepted the challenge before them and performed their assignments without flaw. As a result of their efficiency and motivation, many victims were removed to safety. This would not have been possible if not for the high degree of professionalism and training exhibited on February 4th, 2015. Congratulations and thank you.
This is Andrew.
Would Lieutenant Andrew Myers come forward? Lieutenant Andrew Myers, whereas the above-named member of the East Norriton Fire Company displayed courage and a dedication to duty on February 4th, 2015, whereas a four alarm fire broke out at 611 Sweet Street, multiple residents were trapped inside their apartments and in the hallways while a fire raged out of control in their building. The above member utilized his training and quick action to safely remove a victim from an upper-floor apartment and successfully bring him down an aerial ladder to the ground. Whereas the above-named member acted swiftly and professionally during this incident, he accepted the challenge before him and performed his assignment without flaw. As a result of his efficiency and dedication to duty, a victim was removed from the building to safety. Councilwoman Brady, would you come forward to do the next set, please?
These are in recognition for the various different agencies who lent their assistance. Whereas on April 19th, 2015, a three alarm fire occurred in the 800 block of Cone Street in the municipality of Narsetown. Fire broke out at 818 Cone Street and quickly spread to five other homes. Whereas with limited access to fighting the fire, extreme heat, and fire conditions, other homes of the block were saved and no one was injured. Whereas the many agencies that assisted the Narsetown Fire Department in an operational and support role at the incident. Therefore, the Narsetown Fire Department would like to thank the Narsetown Police Department for their professionalism, dedicated emergency service, and commitment to the duty of the Narsetown community. And I'll read and present for the various different agencies. The Narsetown Police Department assisted the Narsetown Fire Department. Do we have anyone from the Narsetown Police Department to accept?
Chief Talbot's here.
This one is to the Hancock Fire Company with thanks from the Narsetown Fire Department. Fire, I'm sorry, Fairmount Engine Company number two, assisting the Narsetown Fire Department. Montgomery Hose Fire Company. Narsetown Hose Fire Company. Narsetown Code Department. Montgomery County Department of Public Safety. Montgomery County Incident Support Team. Goodwill Fire Company. Norriton Fire Company. Swedland Fire Company. King of Pressure Fire Company. Barron Hill Fire Company. Conchahocken Fire Company number two. Center Square Fire Company. Lower Providence Fire Company. Limerick Fire Company. Gladwin Fire Company. Upper Windid Fire Department. Towah Minson Fire Company. Royersford Fire Department. Perkyomen Township Fire Company. Scott Lynch Fire Marshal for White Marsh Township. Plymouth Community Ambulance.
At this time, I'd like to ask Council Vice President Sonya Sanders to come up and do
So, these awards are in recognition for the agencies as well for the NARS Apartments Fire. In recognition and sincere appreciation for your assistance, whereas on February 4th, 2015, a four alarm fire occurred at 611 Sweet Street in the municipality of Narsetown. Fire broke out on all floors of a five-story apartment building, trapping multiple occupants inside. Whereas the many agencies that assisted in the Narsetown Fire Department in an operational and support role at the incident. Therefore, the Narsetown Fire Department would like to thank the Narsetown Hose Company for their response to this unprecedented event. The members of the Narsetown Hose Company performed their assignments with professionalism and dedication to duty. Our first recipient is Fairmount Engine Company number two. Second agency is Hancock Fire Company. Montgomery Hose Fire Company. Narsetown Hose Company. The Narsetown Fire Police. Thank you. The Narsetown Code Department. Pennsylvania American Water Company. Montgomery County Public Safety. Montgomery County Incident Support Team.
We could do that one, too. Do it at the same time.
Along with Port Washington Fire Company.
Just want to do them both.
Thank you. Bridgeport Fire Company. Goodwill Fire Company. Norriton Fire Company. Swedland Fire Company. Plymouth Fire Company. King of Pressure Fire Company. Barron Hill Fire Company. Thank you. Conchahocken Fire Company number two. Center Square Fire Company. Lower Providence Fire Company. Collegeville Fire Company. Gladwin Fire Company. Upper Gwinnett Fire Company. Abenteen Fire Company. Towah Minson Fire Company. Perseverance Fire Company. Flower Town Fire Company. Royersford Fire Company. Perkyomen Township Fire Company Number One. Plymouth Community Ambulance Association. Volunteer Medical Service Corps of Lansdale. Narberth Ambulance. Horsham Fire Company. Penn Wynn Fire Company. Orland Fire Company. And North Penn Goodwill Services.
Again, as we close, thank you so very much for your service to the municipality of Norristown. We thoroughly appreciate and recognize all of the hard work you've put forth. One more round of applause for our members. We plan to make sure, now I've seen you somewhere before.
Madam Vice President, any announcements?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The first announcement is in recognition of the municipality of Norristown. They were recognized by the Pennsylvania State Association boroughs at their annual banquet. Norristown's website was awarded second place. Elmwood Park Zoo Carnival will have games, food, fun, and lower parking lot. That will take place Thursday, May 7th through May 10th, and that begins at 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. There will be a grant opening for the ribbon cutting of Icons, which is located at 1003 East Main Street. That will be a sports bar and grill. The date of that is Saturday, May 9th at 5:30 p.m. The last announcement is Art Saves Me. This will showcase art featuring artwork from the Norristown youth. Artwork will be on sale, $5 to $30, and that's sponsored by Communities That Care. And that is on Thursday, May 14th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Theater Horizon. Does anyone else have any announcements? That concludes the announcements.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sanders. Madam Secretary, any public comment?
No, there's not.
Any communication?
No.
Thank you. We'll move into the first item on our agenda. Mr. Crandall, who will give us information on easements and covenants for excess ingress and egress? Okay, and that's the attorney for the 900 Sandy Street Luxor Lane. Ms. Nace, right?
Hi, yes, that's correct. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have to say, I haven't been in this room in a while, and I'm enjoying your podium. It's very nice. Thank you. My name's Carrie Nace Pass. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild. I represent Sandy Springs Real Estate Partners, who are the owners of the property located at what is now known as 900 Luxor Lane. Just to give you a little bit of a background, as you recall, we did receive final approval quite some time ago to develop an apartment building on this property. And as part of that approval, we are also including a fire lane access to the rear of the building. When we went through and we were finalizing the plans, we realized that Kelly Drive is actually a private road, which is owned by the former developer of the Regatta, which was developed quite a few years ago. And in looking at the access easement, well, when it was developed by the owner of Regatta, they granted an access easement to the other two lots, one of which is our lot, known as 900 Luxor Lane, to allow us to use Kelly Drive for access purposes. I'll hand out to you, just so that you can follow along a little easier. This is an exhibit showing the access easement area. What's being handed out to you, as I mentioned, is an easement plan showing the original access easement that was granted by the prior developer. The area that's in green is the actual access easement. When we were looking at our plan, you can see just below the green area, there's an area that's highlighted in yellow. The access for the fire lane that goes behind the proposed building is just outside of the access easement area that was previously granted. So what we have done is gone back to the owners of the Regatta and asked them to extend the access easement area for this small portion, so that we can construct the fire lane and then also have access through that portion of Kelly Drive to get to the fire lane. The original access easement agreement that was signed years ago by the developer of Regatta stated that any amendment to that access easement agreement requires approval of the municipality of Norristown. So in order for us to enter into that agreement with the owner and to extend this area, we need to obtain approval from council. We did go one step further to give Norristown some additional rights as well, so that in the amended access easement agreement, we did include language that also grants Norristown an easement over and across this portion of the access area to provide emergency access to both Lots One and Two. So we further expanded the easement that was previously in place, just to confirm that the municipality would have those access rights as well. So we're here this evening just requesting council approve the amendment to the access easement agreement to extend the area as shown on this plan.
Okay, council, any questions? Councilman Simpson.
Mr. Crandall, are there any objections to this? I mean, anything that planning gave with regards to the easement?
No, there are no objections for staff. We fully were engaged in the process and recommend the approval by council.
Council, any other questions? Councilman Perry?
Did our solicitor, were you able to look at the information in regards to the easement?
Yes, Councilor Perry, we did look at it, negotiated with Ms. Nace's office, ran it past the rest of staff, and we're in agreement with Administrator Jones's opinion. I think this is a reasonable agreement for Norristown.
And do we also know that the Regatta is also in?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Council, any other questions? Would a council member like to make a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Declaration of Easements and Covenants for Excess Ingress, Egress, and Utilities to Allow Construction of 900 Luxor Lane?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Chief Talbert, would you like to give us a little information on handicap signs?
So we've gone through our normal process, and we're requesting that you approve a motion to install handicap signs at 225 East Marshall and 1531 Arch. We're also asking, I'm sorry, those are for removals at those two locations. They're no longer needed, so we're asking for those to be removed.
Okay, thank you, Chief Talbert. Council, any questions? The council member would like to approve Resolution 15-118 to remove handicap signs that are no longer needed and install HP signs for 225 East Marshall Street and 1531 Arch Street.
Yes.
Madam Secretary, roll call, vote please.
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
Aye.
Olivia Brady? Derrick Perry? Sonia Sanders?
Aye.
Linda Christian?
Aye. Vice President Sanders, would you lead us through the Finance and Code Department sections of our agenda, please?
Sure, for Finance, we actually have a representative from Malley.
Counselor, it's Mr. Dale Umbenhauer, who is the manager of engagement.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to present for consideration the audited financial statements for the years December 31st, 2011 and 2012. Those audits are completed.
Is the red light on on your mic? On the bottom?
Look down on the bass. No, 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 the bass of the microphone.
I don't see a red light.
I don't think he has a red light.
They have to hit it to make a red light.
You did hear?
There you go.
There it is.
Talking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here to present for consideration the audited financial statements for the years December 31st, 2011 and 2012. Those audits are completed and copies of those reports have previously been distributed.
Oh, I'm sorry, the council vice president's statement. That's okay, Madam President.
So I would like to entertain a motion to approve acceptance of audited financial statement for the 2011 and 2012 year ended December 31st.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing nine, that motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council President, one related question. I'm sorry. Just, and this is probably for Mr. Jones, since we've got the 12s and the 13s done, or excuse me, the 11s and 12s done, can we get a timeline for folks for the 13s, 14s?
Sure, I'll actually let Mr. Umbenhauer tell you that.
Thought he was gonna get away without talking.
2013 audit is well underway. We have a goal of having that finished and out the door by the end of May, and we have staff scheduled starting June 15th to work on 2014. At that point in time, once we get that finished, we'll be all caught up.
All right, great. Great, thank you.
Our next, I'm sorry. Any other questions? Thank you, again.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, hold on.
Wait. Our next agenda topic is the Code Department. And I would like to entertain a motion to approve the HARP certificate of appropriateness for properties 17 East Erie Street, 223 East Oak Street, 527 Stanbridge Street, 501 Astro Street.
Second.
All those in favor? Any nays? This motion passes.
Thank you, Vice President Sanders. Council, I'd like to make a motion to open the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like to open the agenda to authorize the solicitor to file an amicus.
Amicus brief.
Amicus brief in support of Lower Marion Township and Fish.
It's Fish.
And a fish appeal to the Supreme Court. Before we act on it, Mr. Kilkenny, can you give us some information about this?
Thank you very much, Madam President. This matter is going before the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, and Norristown wanted to join several other municipalities in support of Lower Marion's position. The case is related to the Business Privilege Tax. A taxpayer in Lower Marion felt aggrieved that owned several rental properties. They went ahead and filed a petition, and a taxpayer bill of rights was denied. The Lower Marion's position was affirmed or supported by the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas, but what happened is the Commonwealth Court, the appellate court above the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas, ruled in favor of Mr. Fish, the taxpayer, and basically held that the Business Privilege Tax does not apply or, municipalities cannot collect Business Privilege Tax on rental properties. This is obviously a concern to many municipalities throughout the Commonwealth, and Lower Marion has asked other townships to file briefs in support of their position to hopefully persuade the Supreme Court to reverse the Commonwealth Court and allow this, allow the Business Privilege Tax to still be assessed on rental properties. So that's the purpose of that suggested motion, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Kilkenny. Council, any questions? Mr. Jones, would you like to comment on Administrator's position on this issue?
Very briefly, we certainly believe that it's in the good interest of the municipality to do that. We're doing some research now that will be in support of the amicus brief that the solicitor files. files that will document the impact on the municipality, and there are some things that we think that we can do once, certainly if this is overturned, to make sure we strengthen our position in terms of being able to continue to collect effectively that tax.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Would a council member like to make a motion to authorize the solicitor to file a?
Debrief.
Debrief.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam President?
Yes?
If I can make a quick statement?
Sure.
Thank you. Two things. One, I would like to thank the staff for their due diligence in a couple areas, and I think we touched on it earlier. One was the sanitation and the trash contract that we had. I think, although we've been hearing certain, certain things about it, I think it was a great move, and it was a great financial move looking forward. So I think that once, once the municipality gets used to and understands the ramifications, or actually the good things that can occur as a result of utilizing the recycling to the level which we need to, that it will become very beneficial to them. Secondly, I would like to also thank staff for their due diligence on bringing our audits up to, to, geez, I can't think now, bring them up to, up to current status. I think their hard work should be recognized for everything that they've been doing to make sure that we actually are in compliance with all areas as a local government. Thank you.
Councilman Simpson, I concur, especially on the audit issue. Did we have the motion second to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?